We will call this meeting of the Board of Education, Fargo Board of Education, to order. I would entertain a motion for the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, second. Okay. We will work off the agenda that was presented tonight. Recognition of the audience, no one did sign up to address the board, but thank you for everybody that's in attendance and watching us at home on the Internet. Staff reports. I will turn it over to David and his team.
Hello. It seemed like I've just been here a few years ago, but I guess I was. So, just have a little report here and then we'll go from there. Just a few days ago, Fargo Public Schools brought all staff together at the Shields Arena to hear Tricia Skiles' message about a factory business model versus a customer service model, business model. With her experience of an airline that would, she would never fly again with, it was as an analogy. This company adhered to standards and practices that interfered with success. This was the factory model that she wanted nothing to do with. She then talked about another airline who went out of their way to ensure the customers' needs were taken care of through innovation actions and listening to the customers. She asked administration and the board to think about which model they wanted their school and district to follow. Yesterday's negotiation session clearly showed your staff, showed your staff, that you want to follow a factory model. You do not want to listen to your employees' concerns. You chose not to listen. Your employees' concerns on professional development, teacher assignment, leave system, or work year were left undiscussed. North Dakota Century Code 15.1-16-14, impasse existence. Number one, an impasse exists if, after a reasonable period of negotiation, an agreement has been, has not been formulated and dispute exists. And B, the Board of Education or the school district and the representative organization both agree that an impasse exists. Fargo Education Association does not agree that an impasse exists. Both teams have topics and proposals on the table that we are still bargaining in good faith. Professional development, FEA had a counter on 8/2619, was not allowed to be presented. Teacher assignment, also on planning, teacher planning time, FEA had a counter on 8/2619, was not allowed to be presented. The leave system, FEA had a counter on the table as of 6/319 and not discussed. FEA was not able to present their final topic, work year, which we had a proposal on 8/2619 to present, but were not allowed. For these reasons, we are not agreeing to impasse. FEA is prepared to meet again on Thursday, September 5th, at 4:30 in the district boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, I will turn it over to Dr. Gandhi. Superintendent, report.
Yeah, good afternoon. I really didn't have many, much to report out today besides just I wanted to thank everyone, all of our staff, board members, and all of our students and parents for a smooth opening of schools and kind of welcome back to school. I would normally take this time to talk about enrollment numbers, but that is just next on our agenda, so that is it for my short report today.
Very good, thank you. Would you like to make the introductions for the next agenda item of enrollment update?
Yeah, our enrollment update. I will hand it over for the first of many times this after, this year, to our two associate superintendents, Dr. Gross and Ms. Eisenberg.
Thank you very much. At your table and on the board is just some data for you to review. It's a side-by-side comparison between opening day in 2018 compared to opening day for 2019 school year. This is the data that's available on our public website. We make this available each month of the school year so that anyone can have access to this. So, as you compare, I'm just going to take a few moments to highlight some of the things when we look at secondary schools. And Ms. Eisenberg will then concentrate on the elementary. So, looking at that first line, as we look at North High School, you will notice that between last year and this year, there is a slight decrease in the total number of students, about 31 fewer students at North High School, day one to day one. South High School, approximately 35 fewer students. At Davies', there's an increase of about 34 students. Ben Franklin, an increase of 18 students. Carl Ben Ielson, an increase of 17. And Discovery, an increase of about 61 students. So across the district, when it looks at all secondary buildings, we are up 64 students. The things that I would like to highlight is at Davies High School, that increase is about a 3% increase from last year to this year. And at Discovery Middle School, that's about a 6% increase from last year to this year as we look. If we would then look at some of the data in those cells and compare, for example, the number of students in grades six, seven, and eight for the 2019 school year, and just think a year or two from now as they transition to the high school, you will see that smaller classes at grade 11 and 12 eventually will be graduating. And if they remain the same, larger classes will come back into those buildings. So as we look at our secondary system, right now we're up that number of 64. But as we look down the road, but we also have to remember we have quite a mobile group of members of our community, and that may change, but we would anticipate an increase in those classes for the next few years at the high school level. So that was just a comparison between opening day 2018 to 2019.
So for the elementary, when we take a look at this, we're up 35 kids comparing the first day of 18, 19 to 19, 20. It feels larger than that, probably because we have the largest kindergarten class that we've had, and that's 960 kindergarteners. And that's up from last year where we had 885. So they're not the same cohort, but that is a difference, especially as you think of it going through the system, going forward. Our smallest class at the elementary is fifth grade with 869 currently, and that's 60 smaller than last year's sixth grade. But again, not the same cohort, just the comparison. So we did shift a little bit of our FTEs around to make sure that we covered the kindergarten. I think the piece that we have to keep an eye on is Bennett. Bennett grew by 10% from last year. So there's 50 additional students at Bennett. We do have room at Bennett. With this growth and looking at where we'd be at next year, we're, we're looking at it becoming a complete five-section building. And right now it floats between, I think we have three sections of fifth grade, four and five of kindergarten, so mainly a four-section. Centennial also grew, and that by about 4%. So on the south side, we're just seeing a little stronger growth. I think it is worth mentioning, though, that Madison is up 21 students. And that is some growth for Madison because their numbers are so much smaller as we go forward. And again, too, in our, in this middle of Fargo, what we're seeing is more, a little bit of a decrease in some buildings and, you know, staying about even. But, so those are a couple spots to watch as we go forward.
Are there any questions for Dr. Gross or Missy? John?
I believe we usually see some adjustments to these in the first few weeks. What's that trend line typically been and what are we expecting this year?
We certainly do see a change. And in fact, if we would look at today's numbers compared to that first day of school, I think we're down 30 students. And that's basically just because as families have picked up schedules, maybe at the secondary level over the summer, it's not, we don't get word that they have moved over the summer until first, second, third day of school. So we do see that change. I think we'll continue to see that change for the next few weeks as our neighbors on the east and west have their schools starting. And I would say probably the most stable number is once we get into that October or November count.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Okay, so I have a question for Missy. I see when comparing last year to this year, both McKinley and Washington show overall numbers have decreased. There might be some others on the list here, too, that I just haven't highlighted. But my question is, there are some, or there was at least when they were my liaison schools, some grades that had only one section. Did this decrease, increase the grades that only have one section? Does that make sense?
It does. So one section, I'm just, I'm looking at the chart where I have all the sections up here. One. We have five, five one sections. It's Madison and McKinley between the two. So McKinley almost runs at two sections per grade level except for one. And then Madison is running at, well, it should be two for kindergarten here, oh, sorry. They're running at one section in first grade, second grade, and fourth and fifth. So with Madison, that's where we did add a kindergarten this year because their numbers were up. So they have two sections of kindergarten this year.
May I clarify? Okay, so at Madison, you're saying in grades one, two, four, and five, there's currently one section, correct?
Yep.
And at McKinley, you didn't say grade, but...
Oh, it, it is third grade.
Third grade has one section. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other schools like that? Sorry.
No, we don't have any other schools with just one, one section.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a question. So we are, our per pupil funding is based off the prior year. Does that come out of a November count or? Or just an average daily membership?
Yeah. You know, initially I budgeted for an increase of 50 students or 50 ADM in our preliminary budget. It actually, we're down 26 ADM overall, so that's a 75-point swing that we'll be discussing in the future as we, we plan this budget. So it's based on the June, basically, our ending enrollment for the fiscal year.
Thank you. I can attest to the growth at Bennett. Our FYC after-school programs, we have 50 kindergarteners out of 90 of our students, so there's a lot of learning to do after school. So, a lot of, a lot of excitement down there on the south side. Thank you for that report. Dr. Gandhi, would you like to introduce the first reading of the operational plan?
Sure. So as the memo accompanying the operational plan will tell you that this is an opportunity just to engage in the first reading and, and the first review of this year's operational plan for the board. Just a couple of highlights, I touched a little bit about this at the staff opener as well. We are at, we're kind of at this crossroads in our district where we can update our long-range facilities and financial plan because some of the projects that were originally on the documents that were started have now been completed. We are also updating our teaching and learning long-range plan and our technology plan. So we spent a lot of last year working and looking at those documents and how those need to be updated. So a lot of our operational plan is what's the future, how are we headed in the future for Fargo Public Schools? So, a lot of work around social-emotional learning, that's going to be the focus for us. We want to continue our work that we did with, in partnership with the FEA and having our safety committee last year. We were able to roll out some things this year, but there's still a lot of things that we're working on, that we want to implement and provide for our teachers. So continuing with the safety committee, and then you'll see some of our teaching and learning goals, which is moving towards that standards-based instruction and having a standards-based report card across all three levels. And then, lastly, continuing with our glass of paper project and making sure that our technology, we're updating our technology needs across all of our buildings.
Nice highlight. I assume everybody read it. Are there any questions for Dr. Gandhi? Jennifer?
Thank you. So I was reviewing our Aspen notes as well after reading this because it triggered a memory. And in there, they talked about, you know, measurable results and changing, or some suggestions around what's included in our strategic plan or how we measure things. And so I'm just curious if, over the past, since they've been here, if, while you reviewed this, if we'd had a chance, or administration had had the chance to do that and implement any of their suggestions?
Yeah, absolutely. I think some of kind of what our feedback is, or what my takeaway was from the Aspen group was, some of our goals that are not measurable, to look at them, not necessarily in the operational plan, but looking at our results policies, if those need to be clarified to become more measurable, or within the strategic plan indicators as well. We did update our strategic plan indicators to, we made some assessment changes to really reflect of what we're doing. And then we've, as, we also talked about, that the results reports that we present to the board, moving forward, we will talk about, this is kind of where we are and these are where our goals are to go. So those are kind of indicators that can be used. So I think the operational plan is what we're doing and then assessed by the completion. But I think where we need to look at, the Aspen group's feedback on terms of measurable goals would be in our indicators of our strategic plan and our results policies as well. I think that would happen through governance, I would assume.
Rebecca?
I'm looking at standard three resource capacity domain. A couple of the items there that I just wanted to highlight. The first one is provide professional development opportunities to employees around stress management and compassion fatigue. I'm, I'm happy to see that we have a focus there. I'm not saying we didn't have it before, but that I've, I've noticed that. And I have no doubt that our employees are, are in need of this as they deal with the important work, you know, that the district has to do, so I, I'm appreciative of that. The second item is researching possible options to develop a district-wide energy policy or energy strategy to increase efficiencies in the district. And I'm happy to see that as well. I'm wondering on that one, where do you look in terms of some examples for researching some of these possible options? Can you help us learn a little bit more?
Sure. So there's really kind of two options. Currently, I think, as we look at our maintenance and operations department, and they've been, they'll be integral part of this work as well, is to first look at, do we need to look at any of our policies and put in energy, energy efficiency practices that we don't have outlined in any policies? So then they do become practices across the district. Then there's also just monitoring, and there's different tools, whether it's through an outside company or whether we do it ourselves. You can monitor data efficient, or your energy usage, and then translate that to costs and what costs for the district as well and to kind of identify areas of opportunities that we may have to become more efficient with our energy and our cost savings.
Thank you. Now, that raises a question for me. All of our new buildings are built to lead specifications without that certification. Is that fair?
I believe so.
Okay. So we're on the right track, but now it's a matter of putting it in policy.
Correct. And then some of it's just kind of practices and highlighting some things, just taking a look at are there opportunities? I will give a very general one, and this does not mean that this is happening right now. But in terms of, when we were discussing this with Jim Free, you know, we had a conversation as, do we ever address how long stadium lights stay on after a football game? And what does that mean for a district? And is that something that we need to take a look at? Is that just a practice that we need to say, hey, let's move forward, let's say after a certain amount of time, we're going to make sure that all the lights are completed because stadium lights are a big energy usage as well? So things of that nature, first revisiting what's in policy and what's not. And that's just something that, work that we have not engaged in to this point.
Jennifer?
Okay, so as a follow-up to my first question, when you had mentioned the answer really lies with forwarding it to governance. So if there are like leading indicators or how to be measured, like one of the questions Rebecca had asked, where do we do this? If there are suggestions based on this recommendation, it's saying changes or additions agreed upon would be incorporated. So that's a conversation, just to clarify, that would happen at governance then before we bring it back for final approval?
I was referencing if we're going to make a change to results policies, that would happen through governance. If there is something specific in the operational plan that you want to see included, I think that's why we have this opportunity for this first reading, so let me know and we'll take notes.
Okay. I see no other hands.
Should, just to clarify then, I guess one of my recommendations would be to take a look that, at Aspen's then recommendations around whether it's leading indicators or, or measurable, you know, because we list some things in here, but they're not all measurable. We say AC, you know, test scores, you know, but we don't put a number on it, kind of thing, like how many students would achieve X, Y, and Z. So if that's something that we want to include, that was a recommendation?
So I think that's where I would ask for guidance on what's operational, what's part of the operational plan and what's a result. So we wouldn't include test scores to be in the operational plan because the operational plan is what is the scope of work that administration will do.
Right.
So if there's something that needs to be measurable in that, that would go here. But if it's test scores, that would be in terms of the results policies, and I think that's where we'd have that conversation.
Yeah, and I may have gotten ahead of myself thinking of the strategic plan. That's actually where I was thinking of that example for, but, thank you.
I agree with that. Every single one of these items are attached to a specific advanced ed. And I appreciate that. That makes a lot of sense. Okay, any further discussion? Great.
I have a question, Rob.
Sure.
Excuse me. This document, you're mentioning the advanced ed indicators. They are linked in the electronic version. Is this available, and this is available in the meeting minutes or the agenda, right? From the agenda, that's linked on from our website if people want to look at this and follow those advanced ed links to...
Correct.
Okay.
And they're also indicated in the appendices.
Okay. Good information, thank you. It will be, this is an ambitious year for cabinet and team and, and a lot of important work. So, thank you for your efforts there, or anticipated efforts. Okay, next item on the agenda is for E, which is the first reading of the strategic plan reapproval. Dr. Gandhi?
So, similar to the operational plan, this is an opportunity for the first reading of the strategic plan. And the strategic plan was developed with a large group of stakeholders within our district and is designed to be updated annually. You will see the updates that we've made, just other than editorial changes. We updated indicators and success or results of strategic one to be aligned to the assessments we administer in the district. We've looked at, we've updated our strategic one initiative two, goal two, to be more comprehensive about, around what we're doing around social-emotional learning. And we put a goal in there to meet all the measures in our MTSS long-range plan that was recently developed. We removed strategic initiative five, goal three, education that works because that was a program that was funded from, by the Greater Fargo Morehead EDC, and they are no longer funding that program. And then in their school culture and school climate, we provided definitions because those are indicators that we monitor, but school culture and school climate through research do have two separate meanings, so provided clarity around that. So those are some of the major highlights. Again, to kind of Jennifer's point, if there's feedback on making other things more measurable or other pieces of feedback, we'd appreciate that before we bring it back for a final review.
Where would you like those ideas to come back? Through the governance or directly to you? The routing of that information, I think, is what I'm asking.
Strategic plan was reviewed by planning, as I think directed by governance. So if we want to go back to that route, that would work as well.
Okay. Very good. Moving right along here. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Jim?
I move adoption of the consent agenda as provided in our packet.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented? Please vote by saying yes.
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 Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Onto our business section of the agenda, we have EL9 recommended changes, and this came out of planning, so I will turn it over to Kristi. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
The item in the legislature this year, the competitive bidding dollar amount, was changed from $25,000 to $50,000, and that is just for the bidding process. So we took a look at it, we had some conversation about it, and we are recommending that we approve EL9 as presented.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. I think part of the important discussion here was this is not preclude the business services area to seek bids, and we assume that you still will be responsible with your, with your shopping, but it does make a lot of sense, so. Any further questions or discussions on EL9 proposed language changes? See none? Let's take a vote. Paulson?
Yes.
Roanbiker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Anni?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
There, there used to be a group called the Nelsens, you know, two brothers. Okay, on to board reports. Committee liaison and correspondence reports. We started with Rebecca last time, so let's start on this end with Brian.
For me, we had the planning meeting on August 23rd last Friday, and that's, that's it for me. I was unable to attend all the wonderful things that I wanted to attend this year because my job had us attending as well, so. But I heard great things about it, so it sounds like it's off to a good school year, so congratulations.
Busy being a superintendent of two smaller districts. I understand. Randy?
Well, I went to the, the opening staff at Shields, that was super awesome. And then first day of school over at Madison, got to meet Mr. Olson, who was really cool principal, very, very nice guy. And then just reached out to my schools just to set up time to meet with the principals. That's all I got.
Great. Kristi?
I was at the kickoff at Shields Arena, and we had planning.
Jim?
I was at the opening. It was great just to see all those smiling faces. I was at the opening, it was just great to see all those smiling faces coming back, although a few of them looked like they could have used another shot of coffee. Hopefully they got that as they were going in. I also was at the planning committee, I was at negotiations earlier this week. State GAC met to review resolutions, none had been submitted, which is not uncommon because we're not in a legislative year. And we are going to recommend re-adoption of all of the standing resolutions that have come to where they have to be re-adopted. And you'll see those all at the state conference. Community Development Committee met, looked at a couple of projects that are really, hopefully going to provide more affordable housing throughout our city, both in our core neighborhoods as well as in the downtown area. And talked a little bit about some of the consulting firms that they are right now vetting out to help develop a core plan for the city. So I think more will come out of that over the next three to four months. Just a side note, I went, I guess this isn't technically a school event, but it was held by one of our administrators. I participated in the grape stop out at Crooked Lane Farms, which was a great experience, even though I lost pretty poorly. And last but not least, I, I have concerns, and I just want to bring it up here. I don't know if you've all seen the inform article today on where we are at teacher negotiations. I have no doubt that the reporter murdered whatever information she got from you, John, because I'm pretty sure you did not say experienced teachers would be seeing a 9% increase. So I personally think maybe our board president should send a message to the editorial folks over at the forum and recommend if this intern, Emma Brier, is going to continue to write stories about school districts, that she record those interviews, and maybe they as a staff listen to them and then evaluate what she's written versus what people said. Because this misinformation isn't doing any good for anybody in our community. And there were several things that are clearly misstatements in this article that was posted online today. I was pretty disappointed to read it, and I think we need to let the forum know that the inaccuracy is not doing any good for our community. And that's it.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll pass that article out, just in case people haven't had a chance to see it yet.
I have not. Let's move to David while those are being passed out.
Okay, I was at the Shields Arena for back to school, and then I...
Okay, I was at the Shields Arena for back to school. And then I got to all of my elementary schools on Tuesday evening for back to school. I was at Centennial where I met the principal and the president of the PTA. And we set up an agenda for the year. And then I was able to meet with the principal at Hawthorne and Claire Barton and go through their buildings too. Attended negotiations last evening. And I want to thank John Rothenbiker. I was put on the career and technical ed committee this year. And I found out about it the morning of their meetings. So my schedule was full and John was able to cover for me, but I've got the rest of them covered. And I thank John for doing that.
Thank you for working through that transition. Jennifer?
So I attended the opener and I will just say I really appreciated Tricia's message. I think it was applicable in multiple areas of one's life. And so I just, I thought she did a really nice job. And she kept the audience engaged. And as always, I learned something. So I thought she was, she did a very nice job. I did, I was invited. South and Lewis and Clark are my liaison schools this year. And I was invited to South for their back to school. I don't know if they, what they call it, if it was their, it's part of their climate and culture, I think, where they do a team building thing in the morning and then they have lunch. And so I joined them for lunch. And so that was nice and had some time to visit with the principal. And he shared the, a couple of books that they are participating or using for their book club this, coming up this year. And I'll put that in my report because I don't have the names of them in front of me. And additionally, he shared some really great information around the grant and how they're applying it moving forward at their school this year. And what else? Planning, health insurance committee met. They reviewed, at the last meeting, they reviewed the bids from two, maybe three, two, I think they had narrowed it down to two different providers. And they will meet again tomorrow to sort of finalize the package that they want to put together in the presentation that will come to the board. Back to school, I was at Kennedy for my kiddos, so I couldn't be at Lewis and Clark. But I think that is it for my report. Thank you.
Just a clarifying question. So was the book club for staff or the students at South?
Staff was my understanding.
Okay.
They're doing Teach Like a Pirate, I believe. Yep.
Nice. Nice. John?
Thank you, President Nelson. I was able to participate in the Davies staff welcome back on the 19th. I was thankful to be able to take a part of that and look forward to visiting my liaison schools soon here as the, get back into their schedule and swing. And the students are actually in the buildings. I was also at the all-staff opener. I've been at the back to school nights, the first day of school for my kiddos. And that's always fun. I also attended the planning committee on Friday. And also then, of course, we were at negotiations last night. And to Jim's point, there's been a lot of confusion, I think, about percentages and dollars and whatnot. And so I'm going to share again what I would consider to be an apples-to-apples comparison of our two proposals that are, that were left, the most current proposals that were offered by each side. To help clarify some of this information, this also tonight was shared with Emma. So she has a clear reference going forward. And that is my report for now. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rebecca?
All right. I was also at the Shields Arena for the back to school opener and just had the opportunity to, a couple of pairs have touched base with me and provided me with some positive feedback and especially regarding Tricia and the training that followed that she was involved in. So thank you for everyone that was involved in putting that together. Like Jennifer said, it was a good learning opportunity. I think we can all take something back and use it in our home lives and probably our work too. Native American Commission meets the first Thursday of September at noon. I've made initial just email introductions in regard to my liaison schools. I'll be touching base with the communications committee members so that we can get our first meeting set up. And last night, I was at the joint board FBA negotiations committee meeting. As a side note, just on my own, I went to, while there were other people, other educators there, and Ru-Pac, you were there, at the governor's summit on innovative education. I forgot to mention that, but that was a couple weeks ago, I think, already in Jamestown. And I went to the second day of that event. It was focused on mental health. I don't have my notes with me right now, but I'll put some written notes together on it. There was some really good information and I'd like to share that at a following meeting. But happy to, happy to go to that. That's my report.
Back to work for the board, obviously. Everybody's busy. Okay, you have the president's report that is actually a report that Ann Marie puts together for me, talking about upcoming meetings. Governance meets on Thursday morning, RSP, RSVP to, Ann Marie, if you haven't, on eggs and issues. She's also seeking your RSVPs for the NDSBA law seminar and annual convention and coming up through there. I know she might also want to hear from those of us who are attending the ice cream social at Clara Barton. Do you want to head count on that too?
Sure, if you want to. I think that.
Okay, let's just, should we do a raise of hands?
That'd be great.
That would make, yeah, September.
12. September 12.
September 12.
At Hawthorne.
And apparently we're not scooping ice cream. We're handing out bars this year. It's a fun night. Okay. Did you get your count? Okay. If anybody, I'm sure she can sneak in after you check your schedule. Oh, let's see here. For my personal reports, I did contact all my liaison schools and working on, heard back from Horseman already, so working on those. I have to admit, I missed representing us at Fargo-Cast Public Health because I was working on getting this thing on my foot. So that was my excuse for not attending. I attended the North High barbecue and I think David did as well. He missed that one in your report, but that was fun. Yeah, it was a lot of fun. FPS opener, like the most of you here, I continue to hear. What a great, great day that was. So I think that would, from my, from what I'm hearing, it was very well received. And of course, I was greatly entertained and thankful. Planning commission as well, or planning committee. And then negotiations last night. From, my kids besides South are out of school, so now my kids are my FYC kids. So I did back to school night at Bennett. And I spent two, two days at Longfellow. And I just came from Hawthorne now. So it's really fun to get back in those schools. And other than that, I think that sums up my report. But thank you, Board, for all of your work and really digging in. I think we have a great start to the year. Oh, let's see here. Back to our agenda. I think we can take a break and then adjourn for.
President Nelson, yes, I would let us take a break and then I would be moving that we'd enter executive session.
Okay. Okay.
And so I am making a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy as permitted under North Dakota Century Code, section 44-04-19 dot one.
Second. Okay. Just a voice for it. Okay, all in favor? Please vote by saying yes.
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 Any opposed? No. Okay, we will go into executive session when we reconvene after a five-minute break.
Not been collaborative to bargain into the last three sessions. My, my own sense of it is if we're gonna let another meeting happen and have it be specific to the one topic that they finally have not been able to address, we're not interested in seeing more of them, so just, we're just saying, oh, then our final offer is on hold over Monday already. If there's this one you haven't had a chance to talk about, let's put that on the agenda. Brandy?
I guess my thought is just, the last time, like you said, was June third, so if they were that interested in doing the whole negotiations, which I don't feel that they have really done with us, then why are we doing it in August? I mean, I understand you have vacation in the summertime, but not all of us could go to the lake for two months. So, I mean, if it, if it was that important that they got it resolved, it should've way been resolved by August. I mean, that's the biggest thing, to wait two months, two and a half months, I, I just don't agree with that. How long was the June meeting? I mean, you guys kinda said we need to be done because it was so long.
It was going very late, it was very late. A large part of it was us, the caucus floor probably higher than us, trying to decide what we're gonna decide. But really, in my opinion, spending a little back to the salary before that, that, that they decided. We could improve at that.
And they thought, well, it's three hours, it is not being productive now, and is, is that, is that why you said we're done?
Yes, yes, we, again, we had gone through all the topics that again, spent the course, there was no agreement or movement on those purposes. Uh, and really, we had left here, finally, uh, saying, I guess we'll meet again in August, but honestly, I don't know where we're going with this.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that, that's why I, I don't feel that they should get another meeting. I mean, we have spent so much time on this and then waiting for another two months to come back and say, oh, by the way, yeah, we do have this now. Um, I don't agree, and I guess my other question is too, they're given their steps, so... Is that automatic? I mean, don't they get that every, I mean, isn't that part of, I mean, isn't that called a raise? I mean, if, if, if I got nothing, I would get zero, but, like, why isn't that considered to be part of their raise? I mean, they're still moving, they're still getting money for moving, I don't understand that part, I don't, I don't get it.
So, just, yeah, I don't know if we wanna go into all of that, just related to our strategy tonight. I, I can walk you through that, Brandy, and why it's an issue and why they wanted to have those proposals that they used.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Oh, good, Jim, uh, if we wanna have that meeting, to hear what they have to say on that last night, I, I think that's good, because we're listening, doesn't mean you have to agree to it. I'm also wondering if maybe part of the teacher's strategy was, um, with the budget, because that became interesting to them last night as well. As a matter of fact, they singled out two of our board members and asked specifically why you voted the way you did. And, and is this a tactic to drag this out until October tenth, when we can make changes or up until, and see where the money's going? Because they bashed our business manager, uh, while you guys have always been able to make the money flow beautifully, and you say that you have deficits, but in the end, she had a nice slide up there that said twenty million, twenty million, twenty million, twenty million. So, or yeah, sorry. Yeah, twenty percent. So, I'm curious, is that part of the tactic? And if that's the case, we're not gonna negotiate budgets ever. We, in my opinion, why I'm on this board, is I wanna see kids get an education. And I want all the kids are gonna get an education, and we're liable for all of that. That doesn't matter if you're here, there, or wherever, and if you're purple, orange, whatever, we are gonna give that to them. And negotiating the budget is not gonna happen. So, like, long story short, if we meet, I think, hear what they had to say for the last one, if you didn't hear, if you don't wanna do that, that's fine with me too.
Well, first of all, that June third meeting, they had ample opportunity, if there was something that had been discussed, they had plenty of opportunities to bring that to that table. And the second thing that I would've liked to have said last night, but I, I could not think of the exact word to say. They've been so terribly busy since June third, that they couldn't meet with us, and now they're actively involved in the fashion every single day, but they have time to negotiate now. And this June, I can't for the life of me tell you what happened on June third. It, it totally derailed negotiations. We went so long with, with no thought given in negotiations, that everybody fell off the track.
I think this is a board, board conversation, and my, my request would be that if the board is gonna go to impasse at that point, we're gonna find, the board also be committed that moving forward, we need to do some adjustments, and kind of the structure of negotiations. This is a culture flaw for our district, not for any part of the board, but the blatant disrespect that our staff is showing to the board of the negotiation room, it gets exhausting. All of the theatrics around this, and there's gonna be theatrics regardless of what decision comes out tonight. If you have one more meeting, when you declare impasse, they will say, well, they didn't even come to that meeting prepared to listen, maybe what they wanted to do. So, it's just gonna be this constant bashing, which doesn't help with our culture, but I think we can use that to our advantage, and also say that, you know what, go back and listen to those recordings. And the statement David just said, I've tried to be tactful in all of our conversations, it's exhausting as a board member to spend as much time to have to listen to the verbal attacks and misportrayal of us. And that's why we declared impasse, because we stopped talking about the content, and we started talking about what our intent was. And that's why we're declaring impasse, because we don't want the rest of our staff that are waiting to get even more retroactive checks because of one group that we do believe in, that we didn't want it, make sure that we get the same percentage, and that moving forward, we realize that this structure is not beneficial.
I just don't think that anything positive is going to come with having another meeting. I, I mean, if it is listening to that one other item, that, that could be fine, but I still think it's another opportunity for more negativity. And so, unfortunately, the sessions haven't been that productive. That's not on, uh, I wouldn't say it's, that's on our side. Um, and I wanna thank the group that was in the room last night. You guys, I was really proud to be part of, uh, part of this board, and because of the, the tactfulness that, that you took in communicating. And, uh, that takes some energy, you know, especially when there's a room full of people here. And, uh, the chanting and the cheering and the misrepresentation of what you said, so... So, thank you for being strong and for saying, that is not what I said, and making those corrections, no matter how it gets portrayed in the paper. But I just wanted to let you know that, um, I was really proud and, and, and the floor, when, when you all answered, you know, the question in terms of why did you vote on the budget. I thought that was an example of, um, we've had, we've had situations before where we've said, you know, who, who speaks? And I thought that all four of you that spoke did, did a fine job. But it, I'll be at, I'll attend the other meetings if we have it, and observe that, certainly, that would be fine. I just don't know if, I really feel like there's not gonna be much more accomplished. So, you spilled my, my thunder on thanking how much, and, and I know how much John has been working on this. So, here's my, I, I just am trying to put myself in their thought process. Why did they want that one last item? It's because where you left off, for each of us, is what goes to the next mediation channel. So, do they wanna leave us on a different position? Because that's the launching base that gets negotiated between our, the three. So, I don't know if there's some strategies in there.
So, a lot of my thoughts on that are, I feel like they're lucky to be here at this point, maybe this is my two-three-four idea. But, and this is why I don't want it to be a precedent. I don't want either side to be able to hold this process hostage by not putting part, proposals to the media. I don't want them to be able to string this out, and our board should not, they should not want our board to be able to string this out by putting vague topics of the initial list in January, and then holding on to this process until we get everything that they want. And then at the very end saying, oh, you know what, forget about it, because we're not gonna be forced going to impasse with a possible negative, negative results to our, to the future. And so, I don't think, I, I think, when I read that the word deadlock is all unresolved in the caucus, in my opinion, that is an unresolved topic, but I am deadlock, but I don't want that, because they had their chance. We've been in good faith with them, and I think it's bad precedent to let that go on.
Um, you know, I think, you know, first of all, thank all four of you for the abuse you took and the work you've done. But I think Rebecca was spot on. I don't think there is any upside to another meeting. There will be another PR media that, um, as well flood this room and the parking lot. And at the end of the day, we're not going to agree to their salary numbers. We're not going to agree to what they'd like us to change in the meantime. So, whatever this mystery item is that they didn't choose to ever share until, I guess they wanted to yesterday, maybe? And I'm sure there was any yesterday. And it gets back to what Rupak said, this is a culture issue in our district. I, I personally would love to see Rupak decide, administrators, support staff, your raise is going to be effect right now. And if it gets adjusted because of what the board does later with the teachers, we'll make an adjustment later. That might put some fire in the future teachers to realize, hey, they're not gonna be able to hold the entire district hostage today. So, that's just my piece of, it's been a funny night.
I would agree wholeheartedly with that, and I think it is theatrics, and one more meeting would just be a PR nightmare. I was just gonna add, I absolutely agree with that. I think that, um, this whole process, and I think there was our, I, this is the, I had a strong desire to have a conversation about how we can, if we're gonna move forward differently, because this entire process is now here, here. So, I agree with moving forward, because you have, uh, you know, authority to do so, and, um, and I, I think Rebecca, you're spot on too. It was just me, the address, and I, I, I like the idea of, you know, given the opportunity, but what it will turn into, I think, in the end, will be one of the bigger things that we have to tackle.
Because I think over the next couple of days, the whole of us should think about, gee, you might want to pick this mediator. I had a conversation with a panel of board members asking if you would be willing to sort of stand in front of him. I think he understands our budget pretty well. He hasn't been on the board for about a decade, but he's spent over a decade on the board. And he's willing to serve in that capacity, but I would encourage all of you to think of other people, and give those names to John or to Robin. Because whether we have another meeting or not, I'm on the side of what's not, and we'll send a letter. But we also need to figure out who's that person that we're going to, yeah? Probably about the same time we're sending that letter. And as a strategy, the letter doesn't have to go to the board. In fact, it might be time to just get all of our strength of heart, possible mediators, give those to you. And then maybe next Monday, we're gonna do that. So, that leads into my next question, that I'm getting, I'm getting consensus here that we are not gonna, we will be, but... We're just, it's a bad start. What does the letter say? Do you think they're allowed to, uh, then see if it's second, if it's like, if it's... Dan, ready to give your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to see that, that was what Mr. Ryan do with that last ten days of impasse. Uh, it makes me sort of, I mean, I don't know, negotiation. So, stories and forums, there's a strategy, where have clarification around the state statutes, so we, so we know it's clear, these folks to the, and the lawyer, contracts to the fees, state statutes, we can disperse and then state statutes, but a high clarification would be there.
I would say we have a process, and I'm surprised it doesn't relate to this. So, it's a, when we're done with our negotiations, don't we, we've done those, we've, we've passed the board, and we're straight back on. This is a different time, from all those.
Okay, so, to that point, then, moving forward, that might be also the new year. I, I, I had the same, same question as you, because I thought, I said, this board wants to receive a contract, he said, no, both parties have agreed with it? As, as a contract, that's really what all the time all the decisions to take down, that agreement wasn't made, like, for both people. But that's what I'm, I'm sorry, I'm...
That's a great person, to that point, I think, our letter needs to say, per Article two, section, you know, five, six, and seven, we are declaring impasse, we don't need a contract.
But are mutually agreed upon?
Mutually, yeah.
And no clarification, is these mutually, well, they all have to sign.
Yes.
Okay, because this was a unilateral, okay?
It's not.
Okay.
This was agreed upon, this one, yes, both parties agreed upon.
Do you think there's a side to that? So, I guess, and in addition to that, the really sweet strategy here now about how we're gonna enjoy this match, moving forward, or what suggestions?
No.
Is that an executive session?
No, that would be a conversation for the future.
But we all have, we all agreed to do that?
I, I think that's a conversation for the future. I would recommend, in terms of the letters, first of all, I think it should come from Robin, um, you can sign it with her. I think you're right, you're right on the contract, so it depends on that. The timing of it, we want to do that, but, that we will have another board meeting before our ten day window to try and see how mediators can do. So, again, I, I really wanna encourage everybody, I think Dan would be good, but I think we need to like, and then, um, give both names to John. There are probably nine days in front of our next board meetings, and that letter should go out, because we have a ten day window. So, we're gonna bring on a guy for the next board meeting, and start that process. So, I think we'll just, we'll, that would be, yeah. So, that, that's, that's sensitive. Um, this could be receiving questions, I don't wanna receive information, but, um, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, do that. Do you, can you share that, any thoughts? What, what would be our, what's your thoughts? We can, we can, we can, we can have a, yeah.